All right, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Echols is absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon is, uh, Councilman Cannon is absent today also. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for another day, Lord. We just thank you for the blessings you've blessed us with, Father. We thank you just for the beautiful weather, Lord, your love, your grace and your mercy. We thank you for the ability to receive forgiveness by the figures of Jesus. Lord, we pray for wisdom and guidance as we go through the business before us, Lord. We pray that everything we do brings you honor and glory and we give you all the thanks in advance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Poverty Subcommittee, work sessions, and city council meeting held on October 18th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 14th through the 20th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations.
Are you the mayor?
No.
Could Cody B. Shears, Stephanie Brown, and the exchange students please come up? If you will, just line up across the front here. They'd much rather see y'all than... Oh, not the, not the back row. Apologies, but the mayor did have a conflict, so, uh, the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the U.S. Department of State and Education have declared November 14th through 18th, 2016 as International Education Week in observance of the many important contributions of international education to our nation, and whereas international education exchange involves thousands of programs, public and private, campus-based and national, that promote the sharing of ideas and experiences across borders. These consist of study abroad programs, citizen and scholarly exchanges, foreign students on U.S. campuses, foreign language studies, and global approaches to U.S. education. And whereas by participating in such programs, our young people develop a greater appreciation and respect for other cultures. These experiences help to break down barriers and build understanding and cooperation, both vital to peace and prosperity. And whereas in honor of International Education Week, the Mayor's Office of Gadsden, Alabama, would like to acknowledge EF High School Exchange Year for its commitment to promoting global awareness through student exchange in Etowah County. Since 1979, EF has connected more than 100,000 international students with caring host families across the United States in an effort to diversify the American classroom, engage U.S. students in, in, in intercultural learning, and prepare our citizens for a globally-minded future. And whereas the City of Gadsden encourages the citizens and institutions of this city as beneficiaries of international education to recognize its importance in their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sherman Guyton, as mayor of the City of Gadsden, does hereby proclaim November 14th through 18th as International Education Week." Thank you all. Would you like to say anything?
We just want to thank you, um, EF, for allowing brains, um, to take different countries into Etowah County. So, it's a lot of cultural diversity and how our students learn about other cultures as well as them learning about ours. Thank you.
And the mayor asked that I give each one of you a City of Gadsden pin, so...
She wants to know where everybody's from, so...
Yes.
If you don't mind. This is Ben Guyton, she's from the Danilans. You've got Evan from Sweden. Woo Sock is from South Korea. Christian Denmark, and Davi, which is from Italy.
Great. Okay. All right. And she wants to know where we're all from?
Yeah, I'm Cajun, so...
Okay. It's not nearly as exciting, that's for sure. I'm from Gadsden, Alabama, originally.
I'm from Gadsden as well.
I'm adopted. I'm from Gainesville, Georgia. 1958, I came.
I'm from Gaston.
I'm from Gadsden, Alabama, as well.
From Gaston.
I must be the only one.
We've known that for us sometimes.
That's what democracy is all about.
Do you want to picture anything, or do you want to text the prop?
Uh, no. I've been to, um, Copenhagen, Stockholm, uh, Fermanen, Helsinki.
All right. the, the value, uh, and the diversity that, uh, exchange students bring to the area. So we definitely appreciate that and, uh, and want to encourage you to continue to consider Item number eight is unfinished businesses, un, I'm sorry, unfinished business. The nuisances on property located at 908 Penny Street in District 3 have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 833 Country Club Drive in District 4. The estate of Irvin L. and wife Mary W. Neff being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
So moved, sir.
Okay, Wood. If you'll come to the microphone and please give the clerk your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is James Wilson Neff, and my parents lived at 833 Country Club Drive in Erde See, and I'm the only heir to the property. And, uh, I've been there since fall of, uh, 1965. We have owned that house. We're the second owners. The house was built in 1962 by John Rossick. And he was a well-known builder in the city of Gadsden. My house is good, it's tight, it's secured. I've had it inspected a couple of years ago, and he said he'd never seen a house so well constructed and built. And since my parents deceased, I've been an executor of the will in keeping up the house. And I've kind of fell behind this year. Last year, I had no complaints about keeping the yard or keeping the house. In March, I had an operation on my ear, I had cancer, I had partly taken off, and I was instructed for almost a month and a half not to sweat or do anything. And then during the summer, I fell and got both my hands injured, and the doctor said it'd been better if I broke both of them when I fell on a cement, and I've got trigger fingers in all of them. But I have been working to clean up the house, and I've had them come out, they've been by to look and see what I've done, and there's still some more to be completed. And I would like a little extension of time to complete those measures that I'm up against, because it's only me working there. I'm the only heir and only child.
Mr. Neff, how much time?
Uh, I would say the first of the year.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves the yards around the house, does not involve the house. I'm sending around, um, a couple of pages of pictures and then also a group of, uh, casework orders dating back to 2006. Uh, that's the, uh, City of Gadsden has been involved, uh, having to notify the owners, uh, concerning overgrown lots, vehicles, trash and debris, various things. Been, uh, eight separate cases. Um, been a little bit of improvements made over the past few days. We are asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance, and if the owner chooses to, uh, to cease cleanup, then the city will have the authority to go in and complete it. And so I'm asking for a resolution. Thank you.
Now, if I, if I understood this correctly, Brian, this was to the exterior of the, the house, correct? Most of the nuisance items?
It does not deal with the house.
Yeah, it does not deal with the house, so...
All right. Based on the advice from the Building Department, I'm going to go ahead and ask for abatement.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion?
Oh, it is, uh, Mr. President, is that not part of the house that's falling in right there?
I'm not sure.
There was, there was a carport attached to the back of the house that has collapsed and fallen. Uh, it's, it's, it's not affecting the condition of the house. Uh, that is part of the cleanup that we would be involved in if the owner chooses to not do it. We just need a resolution to go on the property. Thank you.
So, uh, again, I just want to be clear with the owner. What's happening is there's a resolution that's about to be voted on here that, uh, if passed, will give the city the authority to go on the property and abate the nuisance if you do not abate it yourself or do, don't complete the cleanup.
Right.
So what I would encourage you to do is stay in contact with the Building Department as you progress, and, uh, and they'll give you adequate space if, if you're, if you're making progress. Okay? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 10 through 14 are public hearings, and they're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. Uh, this is for demolition work that has already been performed, and we have five locations. 1413 Chestnut Street, that's in District 5. 1417 Chestnut Street, that's also in District 5. 2201 Councillor Avenue, it's in District 6. 2319 Forest Avenue in District 6, and 918 North 36th Street in District 7. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Our final, final public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 346 Albert Raines Boulevard from I-1 Light Industry to B-1 Neighborhood Business District. The applicant has leased the building for use as a shaved ice establishment. The planning commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I would ask that we suspend the rules so we can bring it up on the new business today.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption, please.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution, uh, endorse, for, for endorsement and support of the efforts of the Alabama Bicentennial Commission in Gadsden. This authorizes forming a community celebration committee to support the statewide and local observances and celebrations to mark the 200th anniversary of our statehood in Alabama. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new business? Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Remarks by the mayor and council? Councilman Worthy?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, Councilman Billingsley?
Well, I just want to, uh, thank all the, uh, exchange students for being here, and, and I know you're very, in a strange place, and it's very difficult to understand the way we do things in this country. But when I was overseas, I couldn't understand the way y'all did things, so that's just the way it goes. But we're just glad to have you here. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, mine was, all my experiences were in the Far East, so I was, in the late 60s, Barbara and I did the exchange student, and we ended up with two from Yugoslavia. And I want to say that I learned a whole lot more from them than they ever learned from me. It was unbelievable. And then to watch the progress, or whatever you want to call it, since then in the countries and what's happened, it alerts you to watch and to learn from that too.
Councilman Cannon, uh, could not be here today, and he asked me to make an announcement on his behalf. The Treats on Wall Street event is this Thursday, October the 27th, and the time is from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and he wanted to encourage everyone to come out and enjoy this event for children in a safe and a clean environment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just have a couple of announcements. I'll start with Toys for Tots. Uh, if you recall, a few weeks ago, I read some, uh, read an announcement that highlighted some dates. Uh, we, and I want to highlight some of those, uh, some of those dates have passed, but I do want to hi, highlight the upcoming dates. Uh, these were all the application dates, the 2016 application dates for Toys for Tots. Um, and again, this is sponsored by, this, this activity is sponsored by the Marine Corps Reserve. Tuesday, uh, November, Tuesdays, November 1st, 8th, which is voting day, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, from 9:00 AM to noon, and then from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Uh, they'll be taking applications at the Catholic Center of Concern, 612 Chestnut Street. Or you can apply online at www dot toysfortots dot org. Uh, complete the online application. Applicants do not provide all the information described below, and you'll be contacted prior to approval. The following is required for anybody that applies. Children must be living in the household, photo ID of a parent or guardian, social security cards for all in the household are required, proof of income, a current bill with the correct address is required as well. And if you don't, you are not eligible if you have signed up at another agency for similar services. I've also been asked to announce that the Grace Heritage Cemetery cleanup will be Saturday, October 29th, uh, from 8 o'clock in the morning to, uh, 11:00 AM. So 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So anyone that's interested in supporting that, uh, please, uh, please, please be sure to support. The, the last thing I'll, I'll speak to before we entertain a motion to adjourn is I do want to remind people that Election Day is November 8th. This, this, uh, has been a painful, uh, election cycle to go through. I think most people would agree with that. But, uh, but that should not deter us from exercising, uh, one of the most sacred rights that we have as U.S. citizens, and that's to go out and vote and support the, the electoral process. But, uh, I bring that up because I want to remind people that it'll be somewhat challenging this year. I'm holding in my hand summations of, uh, about 14 different statewide amendments. Um, please take the opportunity, because I'm still doing my homework as well, please take the opportunity to understand all 14, if you can, so that you'll know what you're voting for. But in particular, I would like to highlight number 14, um, statewide amendment number 14. Um, we have to, we need this one to pass because again, there are some, uh, some rights at the local level, uh, and some things that we've done even in the past that if we don't, uh, pass that amendment, then we, we may see repealed. So again, just please understand what you're voting for, cast your ballot and, and cast your ballot based on your own conscience, but, uh, please understand what these amendments mean before you vote on them, and it's always encouraging to, to see people do their homework before Election Day. And I, and I hope all of that makes sense, but, uh, between now and then, I'll try to give a little more information about each amendment, or at least make some printed copies available to those of us who are in attendance. Okay?
My deal is, if you don't vote, don't come crying to me and grapping. Serious. Because when you vote, you're going to get what you deserve.
Absolutely. All right, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Right on, bro.[1396.63]